Next, we will move on to number 10. And number 10 is spread upon the minutes that Chris Lee, Sammy, Martin Hood, and George Wong, Associate Member, are the only current members of the Child Welfare Board who were legally appointed by Commissioner's Court in 2014, and that Rebecca Dixon, the alleged Chairperson of the Child Welfare Board, has not been a legal member of the Child Welfare Board since at least 2014. So done. Can I talk about why we spread that appointment? After last week's meeting, in which we appointed eight new board -- well, we appointed eight new board members, one of which was a reappointment, it came to my attention from our district clerk that a lawsuit had been filed by Rebecca Dixon against Ms. Bruegger. Is Mrs. Patterson still here?
She left.
And the lawsuit also named the Child Welfare Board as a plaintiff. Of course, I was extremely upset, not happy about that, especially not knowing whether or not funds from the Welfare Board are being expended for that purpose. I know Elton, I know your office had some contact with the attorney, who had taken the position that he was legally and lawfully hired by the Welfare Board to institute that suit. And so, that's why we are spreading this appointment, and so that it's noticed to anyone, including their lawyer, that if he continues to incur services, funds, et cetera, that he may be doing so without actual authority. And then, my hope is that the new board members, when they take office in January, can right the ships, so to speak, and assess the situation, and see what's right. Whether or not Ms. Dixon keeps her lawsuit going, that's her individual, that's her choice, but it doesn't seem like the Welfare Board should be involved in that kind of stuff.
Especially if the decision to bring in more of the lawsuit was made by a board that's not even a legitimate board.
Right. Well, this controversy has been going on there since I took office during four years. Am I right, Mr. District Attorney?
Yeah.
No, I'll do fine. Okay. I'm tired of it. It's a waste of time. We need to fix this and move on. All I have to say.
Well, it's about to get fixed.
Yeah, right. Let's move to number 11.
Motion.
I have a motion saying discuss to take action, appoint new board members to the Child Welfare Board effective January 1, 2017. This is under Commissioner Beckendorf. I think he wanted, only named and appointed one member last week, and I think he wanted to.
Yeah, I just make sure that the record, I'd like to reserve my second on these because several people that I thought would be very good members of the board, and in doing this, I almost look at like a job interview, or like two nominees, and want to go more hard. But they, I say a nomination, which also would make it an odd number on the board, so there is no tie to vote. Ms. Janet Harris of Rutter. Ms. Harris, actually, longtime resident of McAllen, but she worked for CPS for almost 10 years, retired several years ago. I thought she would be great person on the board, because she's seen the other side of the business, she's seen what CPS does, what their needs are, so she can, I think, be in a better situation on the board to know what the needs are. She has a degree in criminal justice, she also worked as a criminal officer, so she had a good background, and it would be a good asset. So I would like to appoint Ms. Janet Harris as a second member.
That's just my little term down, I'd like to nominate Robert Maddox. I'm just stable, what am I gonna make?
Do you have anything on Maddox, as far as what he is? Ms. Maddox, you're the one which wants you to come forward.
Good morning, Commissioner's Court, and I thank you for, wait a minute, naming heads up to speak. I am a grandmother, and I am a great parent. I can read many who have said that I love children, lots of people have said that, but I speak from my heart. I care deeply about children. I can't cover enough about how sad I was when I found out the shabbiness of the Child Welfare Board had just come in. In my heart, I am so proud. I do have experience. I do have knowledge. I can and will be an asset to the Child Welfare Board if I am able to.
No, I was gonna say, I might want to take a second to address a couple of things. It's one of those areas where, you know, sometimes it's damned if you do, damned if you don't. You know, it was brought to our attention many weeks ago by Ms. Sebastas and Ms. Bruegger about some issues at the Welfare Board. Since that time, there have been a lot of folks that have been working, a lot of times behind the scenes, to get a handle on what the situation is and what was going on. We've gotten, to the large extent, a lot of our requests for information have been disregarded, it appears. You know, but it became apparent, as it, those requests were being disregarded, that we needed new leadership, that was clear. And yet, we get it on the agenda, we have this completely flushed out, talked about, and then we get it on the agenda the following week, to appoint board members for 2017, and then we get criticized that we're rushing. I can only speak for myself, the three board members that I appointed, I met with, I interviewed, I spoke to at length. I took my appointments very seriously, and I'm only speaking for myself. And the suggestion that those appointments were rushed, that we could just do this and move on, I'm quite frankly offended. I am extremely offended by that, because it's not true on my part. And if you've watched the workshop, when Commissioner Beckendorf says this is about the kids, he's right, and I said that multiple times. I'm tired of this organization being politicized. I've appointed individuals, my amendments, and I don't even know what their political ideology is. I really don't care. I want people in there that are going to put the kids first, and they are going to be committed to the law and the process. Open meetings, open records, transparency, and I vetted my candidates. These are my first appointments to the Welfare Board. I will be keeping tabs with them, they will be keeping me updated. I hope that they, along with the other board members, will make sure that this court is capitalized on a monthly or quarterly basis, so that it never gets back into the situation that we have. So, I'm just gonna, you know, we're trying to get this situation addressed. And that's all I'm gonna say. You know, and I'll just say this too, and I said this, you know, as far as the appointment of Ms. Post, you know, the fact of the matter is, she's the only one that showed up here in court, she did answer questions. And the fact of the matter is, I think this new board, of which she is one person, is probably going to have questions as to what has been done, or what they've done in the past, and hopefully she can assist in that regards. But she is not going to be able to control the board as one board member. Other than that, we have a brand-new board, and we will be adding other members. And if people are interested, please fill out an application. They're in my office, and this Commissioner's Court will definitely consider your applications. I will distribute those applications to all the commissioners. If somebody decides to make a nomination, we will take it up. But there is going to be a process for doing that, you know, so that the board can, will probably get larger. Not to mention the fact that if you're interested, this board, under the bylaws, can appoint associate members. So, this is an opportunity. Anybody who wants to be involved can be involved on some level, no matter what. Because that board, even though it might be nine, 10, 11, 12, whatever it ends up being, they still are gonna need help. I'm hoping they'll do fundraisers, so if it's a call to arms, then please fill out an application. I will also provide that to the new board, so that they can consider those individuals as associate members. So, anyway, that's all I want to say.
Well, I think we, you know, our appointees are gonna reflect their success or failures are gonna reflect us. And I think this is something that we're gonna have to keep a very close eye on over the next year or so, and I expect every person that's on that board, whether it's my nominee or anybody else, if there are issues that they have concerns about, that they will come to one of us or to Commissioner's Court and express those issues. Because if we need to remove somebody, then that's what we have to do, that's our responsibility, to remove somebody if they're causing issues, if they're going against open meetings and things like that. So, it's our duty to make sure that this runs correctly for those kids, and so if there's issues in the community, keep appointing new people and removing people. So, it's not that we said, what we said today or this year is finalized forever. We can't add and remove people as.
I was watching that during our workshop, I personally questioned the head of CPS on three different occasions during that. And I asked him directly, had the Welfare Board not fulfilled any requests that they had made for assistance? And what was the answer all three times? No. The board has not failed to meet their requirements. So, when we're talking about supervising this board, I think we really should. But once again, I want to reiterate, this thing has been a political football for as long as I've been on this court. And it keeps coming up again, and again, and again, and people want to exert themselves, and that's fine, that's wonderful. I would recommend us holding the number of the people on this board to less than 10 people. The more people you get, the more prepared we can be.
And I do want to take this opportunity, since we're on this agenda item, to recognize Tracy Sebastas and all of the other individuals in our community that did step up to provide Christmas for those children that are in our, that are in the system. I had reached out after the last meeting, I had started, and I had reached out to Carol Nemitz with Toys for Tots, but honestly, before that could even get going, Tracy had already put out the call, and we had toys being brought, and items, and stuff being brought here, not just, not necessarily just for Waller, but also for the children outside of Waller County, is that correct?
That's correct. Kristen, Kristen helped a lot, if it wasn't for her, she put out the call on Connie, and we covered it in three days. Three days, and that for all the kids.
Well, we do appreciate that, and, but again, you know, we were gonna, I was gonna try to make sure those kids had a Christmas, no matter what, that you guys stepped up and filled the void, and we do appreciate that. It was, there's no doubt in my mind, it was disappointing when, you know, the statement was made by a board member that since they were being replaced, they weren't gonna be doing a toy job, that, that you have to question your.
Well, the individual who made that comment should be ashamed of himself. And they know who they are. And, you know, I tell you what, if they decided to run for office, again, I know there's a lot of folks from this committee that will make, they can totally make know what his comments have been. And, see, it frustrates me so much that comment was made, because these kids go through so much, and can you imagine on Christmas morning, you know, little Johnny, you make your roll of little suits, or walks in there, with, you know, all these hopes, Santa Claus brought him a doll or, you know, a bicycle, and all of a sudden, there's nothing there because of some accord that was too caught up in themselves, and so that little Johnny and little suit, maybe they did something wrong, and that's why Santa Claus didn't come and see them. And for, you know, for those board members that allowed that to happen, shame on them, they should be ashamed of themselves.
Can I, can I ask you guys one more thing? I know you guys get tired of listening to me, but, you know, it was embarrassing, and I know that we that live here that care, don't want this kind of reputation, but I was at a meeting at Boys and Girls Country, and I've got Will, who's the head of Boys and Girls Country, and two program directors, teaching parents, which are the house parents there, one of our volunteers, myself, and a CPS caseworker there, and when that CPS caseworker stands there and says, "Well, I would have liked to brought more stuff, but Waller County decided they were doing nothing, zolch nada for these kids, because they got fired, and they weren't doing Christmas," you know how embarrassing that was? And that, and that's on top of, it's not just what they said, you know, when they got us here, but it's outside of our county too, it's outside our community, and the people that are stepping up and helping take care of our kids. I was, I was so embarrassed, I was so ashamed, I felt like I needed to defend us.
But how do you defend that?
You don't, but I was so embarrassed.
Indefensible comment.
That that happened.
You know, I, CPS director was here, and the question was asked, and he answered that board did meeting a standard, or about meeting a minimum of one thing, going beyond standard or something else.
He also clearly said that he, that the needs had been met with the parameters that he had been given.
Yes.
Okay, and that's, that's a little different statement than "all the needs are met." He said, "within the parameters that he has been provided."
That's right. And I would say this, and I would, in this, personal note, I am so glad that it has come to us. I am elated and excited that there is a new beginning, and I will be watching up here for the board. I did say, Jesus Christ, so I'm going to be watching, because I know him. So, in the military, you talk, sometimes, an excuse is just a modified lie, and so, I'm not gonna be an excuse for what happened to the board, but I will give a promise that will happen, as far as I'm concerned, from this point forward. I will, I will, this particular board, I will, I will be watching, just like that old guy at nighttime, watching for a mouse for a face, because it's important, and we have more scope with this than I originally thought we did. And I want to thank our legal for the effort and the work that they have put into this, and the education that they have given us on this particular matter. And, yeah, you've done a great job, Elton, thank you very much. So, and with that being said, I still want us to get some documentation, and I still would like to hear again, so if there's a big criminal behind us, I'd receive their documentation, so.
And I just, for the benefit of the court, after our last meeting, I did reach out to Mr. Carn, is that Don Carn? And spoke to him. The board members that have been appointed, if they, my office has those applications. I think, Cindy, we've reached out to all of them, that they need, that application has to be filled out.
I don't have all their contact information.
Okay, if any of you have contact information for your appointees, you need to fill out that for Cindy.
What I have to say is, also, Judge, how are these people gonna be vetted before they're allowed to speak?
The application is filled out, it is provided to CPS, CPS runs the background check, and that needs to happen. The sooner that happens, the better, because I've reached out to Mr. Carn, because I emphasized to him, he will be the one that will kind of herd the cats, and get them to have their first meeting, organizational meeting, at first of the year, in which they will elect their officers. And I strongly emphasize and encourage that I would like, that meeting needs to happen as soon as possible after the vote. So, the application needs to be filled out, so the background checks can get done, so they can hit the ground running as soon as possible after the general vote, so.
What, drivers that vet, will that, will that encompass past criminal records and that sort of thing?
It does. It's a, it's a complete DFPS background check, just like our volunteers have to go through, because they do have access to confidential information regarding the kids, so that the needs can be met.
Okay.
Well, I should reiterate, I think we do need to, just to continue to ask the questions about the whole board, as far as their financial thing, there is something there that they're refusing to turn over, but they can, they go, and what Commissioner Amichard said, you know, what he does here, but he didn't, he said that they, they had not had any requests, had not been filled in, and to me, I don't know where the ball is dropped, because when I went there, I heard about the children that had to sleep on the boards. They said, "Yeah, it doesn't happen often, but it does happen." And, and it's like Mr. Pat said, she's correct, when I left there, I went straight to the store, and I bought an air mattress, two pillows, and same thing, I didn't, not who I am, but.
I would be curious as to why one of the CPS budgets would not.
Well, and again, I think that's where the problem is, is why would they allow that board? Why wasn't the advocacy board in there saying, "Where do y'all put the kids that have to stay away from the nothing?" Because, I mean, I think you could sit there and say, "Well, how come nobody's asked? Where do you, obviously, when you walk through the building, and you don't see a bed, where do you assume that they stay?"
There might be a legal reason why they stay.
Well, there could be, but again, you know, it's symbols and air mattress, or something like that. So, I mean, I think, I think the new board needs to be proactive, make sure you go and look for things to do, not just sit back and wait for requests to come in, you know, "Let's go screw some set room, do you need a TV?" Or walk in there, and you saw that old TV, I mean, it was, it was this big. I don't think you would have to, you shouldn't have to wait for two kids to say, "Hey, can we get a bigger new TV for the kids?" I mean, you walk in that room, like, "Hey, you need a new TV." So, I think.
What you're advocating is a very proactive board, and I'm in favor of that, so I will argue with you for one second.
I think there's a lot of things that are gonna be very different things.
Does this board actually have to be sworn in? They have to be appointed, and they have to pass the background check, and then you guys are gonna have to, see, that's what my other question is, are you guys appointing everybody to one-year terms, or are you gonna stagger it, or have you guys got that far?
I think that's something to do with never.
Well, under the, I.
Well, under the bylaws, they're, they're three-year terms, but when you initially, that's when the board is supposed to be staggered, but you want to agree to your terms.
But that was when the board was first created?
Right, but if you were a new board all the time, everybody's first year.
Do we have to stagger it, when we said everybody this first year? Well, okay, so I think we're gonna, again, we're gonna do much with all this, and have everybody's term initially for one year, that way, this time, we can evaluate each of the members, what you have, if you participate, because these people are new to this board, and any time you get, you know, on a new board or whatever, they make it, they're taking, and there's more type of thing to me than I thought, or maybe this is not for me, and so, I think, if everything's gone, we said everybody for one year, this time, if you agree about everybody, reevaluate everything, follow on to each member, and then, if that's when we can say, "Hey, yes, let's keep this person for three years, and then we can do the staggering," but I think, with everything transpired, I think, we just do one year, and we just, this is the thing.
That sounds rational.
What we could do is do it for one year, then evaluate if we have any new reappointments, that would start a staggering process in and of itself, and then, we can get to where basically we're reappointed, and then that way, you end up on a stag, a stag return. But you also gotta remember that also, then, it becomes a function of the number of board members. So, because if you have like 10, then you're gonna have three, three to four.
A third of them are supposed to operate.
A third is, so. Do we need, as far as our appointments, I mean, do we need to clarify anything to say that those appointments were one-year appointments?
I mean, we just look at it again, this is what I'm sure.
Okay, because we can remove.
Yeah, I have a question. It was mentioned that you were going to redo the contract with the Child Welfare Board that had been in existence since 2001. In that new contract, will some of these, maybe new stipulations be made about the years, and?
That was the contract with the state. The contract with the board is something you do every year when you do the funding.
Okay, so that's already done.
But the contract with the state probably doesn't need to be updated. Or it will be doing that.
Okay, and then, to clarify and make sure I have it correct, Rebecca Dixon filed a lawsuit individually or on behalf of the Child Welfare Board against, it's her, she's listed as a co-plaintiff with the Child Welfare Board, so she's a co-.
What's the assertion on the suit? She, there's a, I don't want to go beyond this scope of our agenda item, but, hey, you can tell from the assertion, so.
Well, we've got number 10.
Yes, there's an assertion that confidential information was appropriately made public, that should not have been made public, and then, as I read the lawsuit, it appears there's allegation of slander, or a type of slander, that damages or something, and those are brought by the Child Welfare Board, and that is it.
So, essentially, that's what this is all about?
That's what that lawsuit is. And if I may, if you'll acknowledge a little bit, I have, and I'm trying to be neutral here, I watched this for 10 years, and I do want to reiterate, there are some, in my opinion, there's some good people currently on that Child Welfare Board, and I think we used the phrase in the workshop, that they get thrown out with the bathwater, and that's okay. But, and it must be December and Christmas, because Commissioner Anstrad, I agree a lot this much. I have watched in the past, the Child Welfare Board be a club, and a political entity, where I think it should not have been. As the last administration went out, I had visits to my office wanting me to indict the person that was in charge of the Child Welfare Board before for stealing money, I had to open up the investigation on that, I opened up the investigation, I found the money, they had it on their soul, and we had personalities in conflict, people that paid each other and so, as, I guess, with my 10 years being DA, what I've seen, and what I hope to see, I want to go on the record and say, and I hope the people that are putting on this committee grow up, are grown votes, and I hope they don't have an agenda for the Republicans to run it, for the Democrats to run it, or Acosta to run it, or both the subpoenas to run it. I'm hoping, in my conversations, that we can actually have some grown votes.
I'm hoping in my conversations that we can actually have some grown folks that are confident, are not themselves, and they're not trying to prove something, that they're big and bad, or that they're finally wanting some more political office, and they get their hands on it. They'll actually put that aside and work together and do what they need to do. Secondly, you all, as my clients, have taken some unreasonable and unmerited hits, remember the public office issue? You were not in charge of the Department of Public Safety, you're not in charge of their budget, you don't have a right to go out there and inspect their fire insurance and see what they have and don't have.
You said DPS.
Or Department of Protective Services. Well, you can't do that to DPS either. In that respect, I do think you've taken some unnecessary hits, but I think you're doing the right thing today. And I think on the flip side of this, once these people get on this board, they're going to be governmental agents and governmental units, and if they act like fools, then I say that you all, and I'm going to call them now, because I've said nothing.
I am too. Ever since I've been on this court, which is full over four years now, we've had this same, yeah, 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 about child welfare. And I hope that this is going to be the end of it, because frankly, I'm sick of it. And just unnecessary hassle.
All right. Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Something that I thought about on the, on the financials for the, for the new board members, they're going to need in that first meeting that they have, usually banks won't change check signers or add new check signers to that account unless they have something from approved minutes of a meeting. So they're going to need to appoint check signers, put that in minutes, and remove the prior check signers, to give that to the bank so they can start operating that bank account. So I just, you might want to let whoever that, I don't know if they know that or not, but I don't want them to be the, you know, have to wait another two weeks and call another meeting when they can't get their hands on the money.
Yeah, they may have to have a lot of meetings early on to, maybe even weekly, before they get everything.
Yeah. That's one of the things that I would address, for them to be able to, because I'm guessing January 1, you're not going to want the old, the old board members still be able to write checks.
Well, I think that's a problem, if we can't get the, the board that's on their way out right now to do that.
Well, and that's.
Put that on the agenda to turn over the account.
And that was the reason for number 10, is because at this point in time, if somebody, now, granted, somebody may have their name on an account, and they may write a check, but is there legal authority for them to do so? You know, that's, if they do so, they do so at their own.
Well, the bank, the bank will put them on as a check signer, if they have a meeting and they declared A and B to be check signers.
Sure, no, I understand.
I'm not saying that's legal, but it might not be a party.
You're right, but this is the bank job.
Yeah, it's not the bank's job.
That's a very funny.
Do we know which bank, that account, anything? If we did, we could ask.
See where, where our checks, we can go and look at the canceled check, and see where that, that would be starting point. Hopefully it would work.
That'll get worked out.
Yeah, we'll get it worked out one way or the other. All right. Why don't we go ahead and do what we did last week and take up the nominees individually? So first one will be Commissioner Beckendorf's appointee, Janet Harris. Everyone in favor, everyone in favor of Janet Harris being appointed, raise your right hand. Opposed, Janet Harris is approved. Next will be Irene Maddox. Everyone in favor of Irene Maddox being approved, raise your right hand. Opposed, and that is approved for.